The Monday, January 3, 2022 City Council meeting is now called to order. We've already had the moment of reflection and pledge of allegiance during our previous organizational meeting, so we're going to move right along to the, on the agenda to item number four, which is approval of minutes, which we have none, nor do we have any communications, petitions, and awards. And that brings us to, we also have no public hearing, I'm sorry. And that brings us to comments from interested citizens. And I'd also like to note that, per the advice of our city attorney, we will only be taking comments from people that are here presently. We will not be taking any comments from those watching online. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment.
Amber Weaver, 1031 Bailey Avenue. I am here, actually, I didn't know that Lieutenant Walker was going to be here, but to kind of give him an accolade, most of you have met or known Sophia, my niece, and she has had issues because she had some scary situations with police officers. One was a babysitter had passed away when she was being babysat, and some other things to where she had kind of thought that police only show up when bad things happen. And I don't know why, I can't explain it, but she took a liking to Lieutenant Walker on Halloween. He gave her some candy, and for whatever reason, he, she, he has now became her favorite police officer in Vandalia. And so I kind of let him know that, and he took special time out and gave her a tour of the Justice Center, and just took some time, and really made a difference in her, in making her feel more comfortable around officers. Chief Alt House was there, and there was a few others there, too. And so, as all of you know, my community and the officers here and emergency services are important to me, and that really made a big difference. And I just wanted to say thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to make comments? Okay, we'll move along to the City Manager's Report, where we have some information items and some action items. Mr. Went?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. There are a couple of things that I would like to inform council of. The first thing is that we'll be conducting the first round of interviews for the Public Works Superintendent position this week. That position was vacated upon the retirement of Steve Nichols on the 31st, and so we're interviewing seven people to start off. That, we're very excited for that. I'd just take a moment to thank our first responders, police, fire, and then also our Public Works crews, who work in the holidays, the nights, the weekends, and do that for us during the season. One of the things that I want to follow up with is Chief Alt House sent me an email today, and I'm very excited to share this with you. There are a lot of issues with the hotels and motels in town, with the crime, the issues that come up with our building codes. And so, we proposed, and council considered and passed, Vandalia Codified Ordinance 878 this year on the hotel and motel reservation. And so Chief Folic, Chief Alt House, Director Cron, and our members from those various departments went through and conducted extensive investigations and inspections in each one of the three motels that are in town. From there, they issued reports of necessary modifications. Chief Alt House has not only reported that those updates have been made in those hotels, but actually, the calls for service are dropping. And so, in this case, council's taken a direct action, and we're immediately seeing results where the hotels know that the city means business, and the owners are working with the Police Division and other departments. So, that's one of those things where our Police Division, Fire Division, and Public, or DES have been very effective. Okay, now for the real stuff. City offices closed Monday, January 17th for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Second meeting in January will hold here on Tuesday, January 18th, at 7:00 PM. We, of course, have our Christmas tree recycling going on through the 31st. That's at the VRC, in the parking lot that's across in the sports complex. And then, of course, we have a couple of action items, if it's all right to move right into those. There's the appointment of representatives to the 2022 MVR, PC, and Technical Committee. Vandalia is required annually to appoint a representative and an alternate representative to the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission and the Transportation Coordinating Committee, sorry, I said Technical Committee. An individual must be designated to serve as the Technical Committee member. Currently, Mayor Herbst is the representative, and Amber Holloway, our Assistant City Manager, is the alternate representative, and Rob Cron, our Public Service Director, is the current delegate to the Technical Committee. So, I would propose that those remain the same.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis, and a second by Councilman Folic, to appoint the representatives as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0.
Following that, there's an appointment of representatives to the 2022 First Suburbs Consortium. The City of Vandalia is required annually to appoint two representatives and an alternate to the First Suburbs. The current representatives are Mayor Herbst and Councilmember Ayers. The current alternate is Vice Mayor Lewis.
Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the 2022 First Suburbs Consortium with the same representatives.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic, and a second by Councilman Blakeslee, for the appointment of the representatives to the 2022 First Suburbs Consortium as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0.
Your Honor, I'll point out that D, although listed in the organizational meeting, we took care of the VDC appointment, and so I'll just stop with Part C here. This is appointment to the Montgomery County Community Improvement Corporation. This committee requires that the mayor of the City of Vandalia be appointed annually.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis, and a second by Councilman Blakeslee, to appoint the mayor to the Montgomery County Community Improvement Corporation. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. And as Mr. Went has mentioned, item D, we took care of during the organizational meeting, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, that being Resolution 22-R-01. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
A resolution approving the replat of Castle Hills Section 4.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Stone Ridge condo association, has submitted an application requesting approval of the replat of 1.130 acres of Lot 28, specifically Phase 3 of the Stone Ridge condominium plat, which contains a four-unit condo building. The condo association is seeking to sell an unused portion of Lot 28 of Castle Hills Section 4 totaling 0.2529 acres in three separate pieces to three single-family residences, being lots 10, 11, and 12 of Castle Hills Section 3 on Mystic Lane, which directly borders Lot 28. The Planning Commission voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of the request to replat.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 22-R-01 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis, and a second by Councilman Ayers, to approve Resolution 22-R-01 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-02. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution approving the Castle Hills extension plat.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Stone Ridge condo association, has submitted an application requesting approval of a replat of lots 10, 11, and 12 of Castle Hills Section 3. The replat is being requested for the addition of 0.1116 acres to Lot 12, 0.1144 acres to Lot 11, and 0.0269 acres to Lot 10, for a total of 0.2529 acres being added to Castle Hills Section 3 from Castle Hills Section 4. The Planning Commission voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of the request to replat.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-02 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic, and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis, to approve Resolution 22-R-02 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. We have one ordinance tonight, that being Ordinance 22-01 in its first reading. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance vacating unnecessary right-of-way to the abutting landowner and maintaining all easements therein.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. Contemporary Construction has submitted a petition and vacation plat to vacate the right-of-way of Top Notch Core and Northwoods Business Park. The vacation of this right-of-way would accommodate the proposed development of this 35-acre site. The developer would be responsible to abandon or have relocated any and all utilities within the existing right-of-way before developing the property.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 22-01 as its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers, and a second by Councilman Blakeslee, to approve Ordinance 22-01 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. We have a couple of ordinances in our second reading, the first one being Ordinance 21-37. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving a PUD major amendment for the Stone Ridge condominiums in the Planned Unit Development District.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Stone Ridge condo association, has submitted an application requesting approval of a PUD major amendment to Castle Hills Planned Unit Development. The condo association is seeking to sell an unused portion of Lot 28 to three single-family residences on Mystic Lane, which directly border Lot 28.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in the second reading, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance 21-37 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic, and a second by Councilman Ayers, to approve Ordinance 21-37 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. Next, we have Ordinance 21-38 in its second reading.
An ordinance amending Vandalia Code Section 452.03A14 dealing with parking.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Vandalia Division of Police, in conjunction with City Prosecutor David Caldwell, are recommending a city code amendment to Codified Ordinance 45203 Alpha 14 to increase driver safety related to the enforcement of commercial truck traffic and parking violations along interstate ramps. The code currently reads, "No person shall stand or park a vehicle except when necessary, to avoid conflict with other traffic, or to comply with provisions of this title, or while obeying the directions of a police officer or a traffic control device in any of the following places, at any place where signs prohibit stopping." The prosecutor is recommending the code be amended as such any place where signs prohibit stopping indoor parking, and this will improve enforcement of commercial truck traffic standing and parking.
Thank you. Since this is an ordinance in the second reading, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment. Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 21-38 in the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee, and a second by Councilman Folic, that we approve Ordinance 21-38 in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries 6-0. We have no emergency ordinances, and that brings us to reports from boards and commissions, and we have a conditional use at 9105 Peters Pike. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, the applicant has submitted an application requesting a conditional use permit to allow the use of a warehouse on the property located at 9105 Peters Pike in the Office Industrial Park Zoning District. The proposal is to construct a warehouse in ancillary, with ancillary offices. At its meeting on November 23rd, 2021, the Planning Commission voted 3 to 0 with one abstaining to recommend approval of the requested conditional use permit allowing a warehouse use within the Office Industrial Park Zoning District.
Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we deny the conditional use in 9105 Peters Pike.
Do you have a second? Okay, the motion fails for lack of a second. Can I have another motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the conditional use of 9105 Peters Pike.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic, and a second by Councilman Ayers, to approve the conditional use at 9105 Peters Pike. Are there any comments?
I have several, Your Honor. I, I know I'm swimming upstream here, but I feel strongly that I need to be consistent in what my position has been formally, and I see nothing in terms of the status quo that has changed when this body turned a similar project down. I'm aware of the efforts which have been fairly tireless and extensive by the city and its staff to mitigate the effects of truck traffic. And I'm also acutely aware of the extensive proliferation of warehouses, not within our jurisdiction, but within the jurisdictions that are contiguous and including Union. Many of those warehouses, and they're extensive, have not come online, which leads me to believe that the incredible amount of truck traffic that the city has experienced over the years, in comparison to the years past, the number one complaint that, at least that I've had, in terms of quality of life relating to the city, has resolved, has revolved around truck traffic. The counterargument to allowing such a development, and it was a conditional use, because we wanted the city, 20-some years ago, when it acquired property around there, developed, and zoned it as such, in order to control development that would be, what I feel, it would be injurious to the citizens as a whole. And today, you're faced with the idea of putting a warehouse on the property. It's owned by good people who've been supportive of this community for years. By all rights, the project seems to be well-planned, but that isn't the issue. It's the result of what this project will do to the city without the current mitigation factors being effective. In addition to that, the one panacea that we've been looking for is legislation to prevent through truck traffic through Vandalia. We've hired a lobbyist, we've worked with our state representative and our state senator to hopefully legislate against through truck traffic through Vandalia. But by virtue of this warehouse proposed, being in the City of Vandalia, even if that legislation is passed, it will not prevent the trucks from servicing this building. So, if the building is built, we have almost no control of stopping the trucks. Now, I know we've talked about narrowing National Road to constrict the flow of traffic. We've talked about legislation efforts. We've enhanced our policing efforts. We've put signage in place. Mr. Mayor, I would tell you, you look out your window where your office is, and how effective has all that been here to four? I would submit not terribly. It has some, it's had some effect, but we also don't have the additional hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of square feet of warehouse online yet, being currently built. The proposed contract, the proposed project is 728,000 square feet with 169 dock doors. And I'm working in broad numbers here. If I take 728,000 bucks times, let's say, 100 bucks a foot, and it may be less, 70 million plus. How many hours do you think that this facility is going to have to operate to support that much capital? My experience is in warehousing, and I will tell you that I believe it will operate probably 24/7 in order to get a return. In addition, the proposal is 162 dock doors. Let's say we only operate half those dock doors in a day. It takes 30 minutes to unload a truck with experienced forklift driver, and it takes maybe, and it can be done with less time, 45 minutes, to process the paperwork and send that truck on its way. And let's say it doesn't operate 24 hours a day. It only operates eight hours a day. So eight, 80 docks, not the 161, times eight truckloads a day, and what do you get? 640 trucks in, 640 trucks out. And granted, I'm only using half of the numbers here, half the number of dock doors. This is ultra-conservative. That gives you 1,280 trips in and out of that building per day. And let's say only 10% of those guys, which could be 5 or even 2% if the whole building's online and all those dock doors are being used, you've still got, and they all turn left at Peters, from Peters to National. Why, we know by experience that that's not going to happen, and we have no ability to prevent it from going right to access I-75. So how many extra trucks will that be through the city? 100 to 200 a day. And that's seven days a week, I submit, not just five. That's a lot of trucks. 16 and 17-year-olds driving to Butler to school at night, on weekends. We want to narrow the lanes. The truck drivers servicing this are not going to be from one company, and indeed, they'll probably be from every country that you know or don't know of. And to think that only 5 or 10% are going to turn right there is probably an underestimate. So I submit that it's clear that the amount of trucks that this is going to develop is huge. And since it's the number one issue with the city and our citizens, I believe it's wrong. I've told several people, my analogy is, if you cut your hand with a saw, being all of the buildings that are proliferating around our city, does it make sense to cut your, your hand purposely then, just because there are buildings there? Yes, the warehouse will create income tax revenue. It's got 590, what, 4 parking spaces proposed, and we charged, we assessed 2%. That creates income. It also creates income for the schools. That's a good thing. And that may mitigate somewhat, if you just look at the financial terms, what it does in terms of the health and welfare of the city. But I don't think it's enough to overcome it. The city is on great financial footing. We've worked tirelessly to keep it that way. So it's not like we're not going to be able to support our police, our continued fire, or streets. It may hamper the increase to the transformational development that we want to do in downtown, but I think that's a cost that the city can bear in terms of its current financial condition. For all of those reasons and more, I strongly believe that this is not the right fit for the confines of the city. It's, this is a tough position for me to take, but I don't think that it's going to be in the city's best interest. It's cited that the establishment, maintenance, operation of a conditional use not be detrimental for the public healthy, health, safety, morals, but most importantly, the general welfare. And will our, the 15,000 people that we represent be better served by putting this building in? And I strongly submit that it, they will not be. And the quality of life here will not be enhanced, and we currently do not have the truck restrictions in place, or moratorium, or legislation in place that will prevent it from happening. For those reasons, and I apologize for getting excited here, for those reasons, I strongly urge you to vote, to vote no.
All right. Any other comments?
I'll be, I'll be very brief. Just because I, my opinion is what I've stated before, and it's, it's two parts to this one, and that is, as a city, we are in a position that we either need to adjust and change our perspective on development, particularly regarding logistics and warehousing. Because this region of Montgomery County is benefiting from warehousing and logistics and distribution, and it's got the full support historically of everyone in the county, other elected officials, the Downtown Dayton Development Coalition, State and local officials, and this body is the only one that seems to be opposed to it.
They don't live here.
What's that?
They don't live here.
Well, I understand that, but the issue is, the development is going to occur in and around Vandalia, and there's nothing we can do about it, and that's been proven time and time again. We've got six or more projects in the pipeline, in and around Dayton International Airport, and none of them are in the City of Vandalia. and none of them are in the city of Vandelia. And I think it's, the reality is, we as a community have either got to start to reap some of the benefits from this development, and yes, there are negative side effects to some of this that some people feel is a negative, not everyone feels it's a negative. But part of the issue is, we are located at 75 and 70, we have a U.S. federal highway running through our town, and I for one don't think that we're going to ever see a legislative solution to stop semi-truck traffic down a U.S. federal highway that we've accepted federal funds for to maintain. I just don't see it happening. And we've got to accept that, and either that or we're going to be here in 20 years, have a bunch of land that's sitting vacant, not ready for development, and we're going to have financial issues because we are going to have expenses in the future to help mitigate some of this, but we've got to have an increase in revenue. Yes, we're in a good, strong financial position now, but if we don't start increasing our revenue basis, our expenditures are only going up, we've got to do something to offset that, that rise in expenditures. And I, you know, we have a property owner here who has a development proposal that is, in my opinion, meets the conditions of a conditional use. I don't feel that the six criteria that we can use to justify not accepting the conditional use, I don't feel that is met. So that's why I'm going to support this use as a conditional use.
Anyone else like to make a comment? Go ahead. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
I'm Ben Reddick, 214 South Ridge Avenue. I represent the property owners, and I just wanted to give, in the interest of time, some brief context to how we got here today with this conditional use application, specifically with this proposed developer. When we first were contacted by the developer, we were very clear, A, this is a conditional use for the property, so you must follow the conditional use guidelines as outlined in the code. I believe they met with the city, talked to them several times to make sure that they're developing some, a plan that would, you know, get, get support of the community. We also were very clear that the community has a lot of concerns with truck traffic, and so we said, look, your plan must, at some level, as best you can, address that. And so as you can see in their application, they, they specifically call out, they're going to be a developer that wants to cooperate with the city, any measures that are brought forward, they're going to support, they're going to do everything they can to promote truck traffic to go outside of town, use the Access Highway, and go that route out of town. I think you can see also from the design that was presented, you have a, you have improved quality of design, improved quality of developer. I mentioned the truck route cooperation. They also have, we, we, we made sure to share with them that there's a plan to potentially develop land on the other side of the Access Highway. And so we said, look, if you're going to be the developer here, let's just, you know, say, for argument's sake, that you get approved, you, you need to cooperate with the city, you need to work with the city to be able to grant them an easement to get the utilities across the Access Highway. They are fully on board with that. They don't have any issue with being able to grant a, a utility easement. So what that would do essentially here tonight would potentially, in my view, this could be the first domino to allow even more development of, what is it, 400 and some acres over there, because they're going to be a player, they're going to cooperate with you guys, A, with truck traffic, and B, with allowing utilities to be extended across the Access Highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
No.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries five-one. Next, we have a variance for perimeter landscaping at 9105 Peters Pike. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant has requested a variance for substantial compliance over a three-year period beginning on the date the facility is operational. The applicant, in their letter of justification, is proposing that in order to increase the economic feasibility of the project, an allowance of three years be made, over which time Pinchall will use reasonable efforts to comply with the screening requirements outlined in the subject code sections. This variance is running concurrently with several other items. At its meeting on December 3, December 1st, 2021, the BZA voted to recommend denial four to zero of the variance, and, and I also, I recommend that this be denied.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to deny the variance for perimeter landscaping at 9105 Peters Pike.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to deny the variance for perimeter landscaping at 9105 Peters Pike. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six-one. Next, we have a variance for screening at 9105 Peters Pike. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, on behalf of the potential purchaser, has requested a variance for substantial compliance. In their letter of justification, proposing that in order to increase economic feasibility that they be given time to meet the screening requirements. Due to ongoing supply chain issues and labor shortages, the cost associated with the immediate compliance of these provisions is estimated, they give an estimate, and it would require the sourcing and planning of approximately 950 trees and shrubs, which is compliance with our code. The variance is running concurrently with some other items. The Board of Zoning Appeals recommended denial unanimously for the variance regarding screening of vehicular use areas from the right away. I also recommend denial of this.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move that we deny the variance for screening in 9105 Peters Pike.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilman Folick to deny the variance for screening at 9105 Peters Pike. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Next, we have a variance for loading docks in front yard, 9105 Peters Pike.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, on behalf of Pinchall Company LLC, the potential purchaser, has requested a variance to allow loading docks in the front yard. Per city code, off-street loading spaces may occupy any part of a rear or side yard, but shall not project into any front yard. This variance is running concurrently with BZA 2113 and BZA 2114. At its meeting on December 1st, 2021, the BZA voted four to zero to recommend approval of the variance of city code section 1234 dot zero five Charlie two, location allowing for loading docks within the front yard. I also recommend that this be approved.
Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the variance of loading docks in the front yard at 9105 Peters Pike.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve the variance for loading docks in the front yard at 9105 Peters Pike. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
No.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries five-one. Next, we have a variance for increased maximum impervious area at 1140 West National Road.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant has requested a variance to allow for an increase of maximum allowable impervious area beyond 80% per city code, 1226 dot zero five Alpha, Table 1226 dash three, other site development requirements for non-residential districts. Properties within the Highway Business Zoning District may have a maximum impervious area, surface coverage area of 80%. The applicant has requested to pave an area of land on the eastern portion of their property, which is currently stormwater detention pond, and this would increase the impervious area above 80%. The applicant has indicated in their application that they'd like to convert their detention pond to an underground water retention facility. This has been approved for several other properties that are located around this, and so staff has no objection to approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the variance at 114 West National to increase the maximum impervious area.
Second.
Who is that? Is that you? I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Folick to approve the increased maximum impervious area at 1140 West National Road. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Next, we have a variance for rooftop sign at 318 East National Road. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, on behalf of Subway, Subway Franchisee, has requested a variance to allow for a rooftop sign placement. Per city code section, rooftop signs are listed as prohibited within the city. The current Subway rooftop sign is a legal, non-conforming sign, so reconstruction would require compliance with the code or a variance. At its meeting on December 8th, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval of the requested variance to allow the rooftop sign placement. And you'll recall, this is Subway, so sub is one color, and they're switching the colors of sub and way from white to yellow, they're just reversing.
Thank you.
That's what you're voting on.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the variance for a rooftop sign on 318 East National Road.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Ayers and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve the variance for the rooftop sign at 318 East National Road. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Next, we have a conditional use at 6520 Poe Avenue. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Hondros College of Nursing, has applied requesting a conditional use permit to allow the use of educational institution, higher education, on the property located at 6520 Poe Ave in the Office Industrial Park Zoning District. The educational institution is a conditionally permitted use in the OIP zoning district pursuant to Table 1218 dash one on principally permitted uses in base zoning districts. The Planning Commission voted to recommend the conditional use permit unanimously four to zero.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the conditional use at 6520 Poe Avenue.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve the conditional use of 6520 Poe Avenue. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley.
Yes.
Councilmember Folick.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Mayor Herbs.
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. And that brings us to council comments once again. Mr. McDonald.
I've been doing this a long time, and I have to say, I, usually it's just kind of a mundane thing, but there was some really good debate tonight between the two of you, and I was, it was really interesting to see, and I just kind of appreciated local government there for a little while, so my hat's off to you guys in making very tough decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
No comments, because I can't beat that.
All right. Uh, Councilman Blakesley.
Make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Fairst all meetings tonight.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, let's see here. Councilwoman Woods.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Folick.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Who am I missing? Uh, Councilman Ayers.
Uh, nothing, thank you.
And Vice Mayor Lewis.
Uh, I have no ill will. I, uh, it's the subject that I wanted to be consistent on, and I obviously tried my best. I have the utmost respect both for the applicant and the, and the people here on council, and certainly the staff that drove this. Obviously, I think it was not in our best interest, but I will certainly support everything that we're doing going forward, and I apologize for my absence in December, a number of issues and a little COVID thrown in, and it was quite untimely. Can't say it's been, I'm happy to be back, but this was a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate your comments also, and I think it's safe to say that we all want what's best for the city of Vandelia, and again, I appreciate the dialogue here and how things were presented and, you know, positions explained. Other than that, I have no other comments, so this meeting is adjourned.